First item on the agenda is to review the agenda.
Motion approved.
Nathan second.
So who was the motion? Scott? Was that you?
Santos, sorry.
Santos, okay. Santos said a motion, Nathan the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Nathan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item number three is to receive comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address the board and issues is not currently listed on the agenda. We have had to send a chat or an email to Nancy to let her know, Mr. Askew and Mr. Markworts. We'll start with Mr. Askew.
Okay, uh, thank you. Am I coming through okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. Well gentlemen, I, I sent an email to everybody yesterday and Nancy, uh, looked at it and I know Doug Holliday looked at it. Um, we're focusing on, I'm focusing on, exactly what is the county's written policy for county staff, not elected officials, officials, mind you, but county staff on, uh, what they can post online if or in the media or give, uh, interviews to the press, whatever, uh, in the public forum. What can they put out there if that, whatever they put out there might conflict with their personal mission of what they have to do for the county or what the county's mission is. So does it put the county at risk for anything from, uh, public censure up through lawsuits? Um, we don't want any more lawsuits where we pay fifty thousand dollars. Um, just don't want that. Um, so my question was, and I haven't received anything back, so I'll throw it open to the supervisors, is there any, um, written policy out there for employees on who reviews what they put out on the web or what goes out on the web or in the media or in the press? Um, is there? Do you guys have, I mean, because when I worked for the city of Davenport, I had written policies on that. I had some written policies even back in the nineties for the city of Muscatine. So I'm just curious, does the county have written policies? Nancy, Jeff?
No, we, no, we do not.
Okay. Well, with this brouhaha with the jailer now coming back out in the press again, uh, it's been there for a while, it's disappeared, it's come back out again. Um, I think the county, I mean, I strongly recommend the county because this will be an issue, that you've all come up with a written policy on who can say what or is allowed to say what. Now, it doesn't mean you're thought police and it doesn't mean that you're curtailing freedom of speech or freedom of thought, but on the other hand, you also are in charge of employees, you're in charge of the county, you manage the county, you provide oversight. I noticed that there is, uh, according to the webpage, one person, you're one person shy on the civil service, uh, board? There is only two people on it, okay?
That's, that's correct. We currently have a vacancy.
Right. So, um, and I believe it's the civil service board that can direct, uh, directly address, uh, personnel issues that might arise from this, but I assume the county, uh, directs them or reviews what policies they come up with, correct?
Civil Service Commission only applies to, um, the deputy sheriff.
Okay, so anybody else that's an employee? Now, is the jailer a deputy sheriff or is he a jailer?
He is the jail administrator.
Jail administrator. So he is, he is a county employee, not directly under the civil service, um, commission. Is that what you mean?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Alright, so I'm getting the line of authority here, getting the, uh, you know, uh, who is responsible for whom set up. I don't want to make any comments that are completely out, you know, out in the netherworld. But so, with that being said, I, I strongly suggest the county starts working on a policy. Because I know, I mean, I know my wife at the hospital, uh, Trinity has a policy on, nurses are fine to say things, but if they start saying things on Facebook or in the media or such, that is in a direct conflict with the mission of the hospital or on top of it may bring, uh, risk, uh, legal risk to the hospital, they're told quit doing it or you can go find a job some other place. And that's the same thing I think with here is, uh, you're not the thought police, uh, you're not the people that are out there that are curtailing freedom of thought, freedom of speech, but you're also the employers. And if someone's doing something that throws in jeopardy the county specifically for any type of, of legal risk, uh, lawsuits, uh, even feeding into a lawsuit, uh, right, wrong, or whatever else, providing some type of foothold for our losses, these are all things that you all need to be addressing as managers for the county. Now, again, my personal opinion, I'm not going to throw it out, what I thought of what the gentleman wrote. That's, uh, his personal thoughts, I have my own personal thoughts, but as a manager, this is something that needs to be addressed. So, thank you. I'm off.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Henry, did you have some thoughts this morning?
Okay, yes, good morning. Can you, can you hear me?
I hear you.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I just never can tell with, never can tell with this. I, I just want to follow up on, on what, um, Ed, Ed said. Uh, on April tenth, uh, this year, the Capitol dispatched published an article, accounting, an online posting in twenty thirteen by Dean Mailer, Muscatine County Jail Administrator that states, quote, "Muslims are the pawn of the devil and that they're going to kill Christians in the upcoming tribulation." And as posted, Mr. Mailer goes on to attack the government's, quote, "Acceptance of the gay lifestyle," end quote, and attack public education. He posted several YouTube videos arguing the same positions. Now, I was surprised that this was, you know, came up, you know, now. I mean, this isn't news as, as this kind of postings have been known throughout the, uh, uh, the county, uh, the, presume the government, I know the legal community, uh, you know, is aware of it. Um, and, and following up with, with what Ed said, well, it's true that a county employee has the right to his or her, uh, personal views. Uh, the administration needs to be concerned when such views may reflect on job performance. Courts have recognized that employers have the right to curtail the expression of employees' views when they conflict with the employer's mission. Uh, in twenty thirteen, a religious discrimination case was filed against the county by a Muslim inmate. While the case was dismissed, it should have put the county on notice of the risks involved in having an individual managing the jail were published anti-Muslim and anti-gay views. As an attorney and defendant in prosecuted civil rights cases against municipalities, if a civil rights case involves a religious or anti-gay discrimination was brought against the jail, these comments would make it difficult to defend the county. We should remember that the county just paid fifty thousand dollars to settle a case against the county attorney and that that money could have been used for better purposes. As the former chief legal officer of a large corporation, I was puzzled by the lack of concern expressed by Mr. Mailer's boss, the county sheriff. Uh, and again, asking the question, you know, what policies cover this situation? Um, has Mr. Mailer been counsel on the appropriateness of his, uh, publications considering his official positions? Uh, the article reports on postings and statements from years ago, so it's not clear if Mr. Mailer still holds these views, but what it is clear is that the county board and the sheriff have an ongoing duty to determine if Mr. Mailer's views impact his professional performance and if his published statements are inconsistent with a statement or, or inconsistent with the position held by a senior member of the county administration. And this, my, my concern is, again, having, you know, as a member of the public, but also somebody who spent, you know, twenty-eight years as general counsel of a large corporation, um, when, you know, and also, you know, having chaired the Environmental Protection Commission. And when I chaired the commission, we had, we had an issue with the state employee who had posted views that were directly contrary to the mission of the agency that he, he worked for. Uh, it's always a tough balancing act when you're balancing individual rights of expression and, you know, and somebody's broader duty to the, to the county. So I would just echo Ed's comment, there's probably something that the county board should, you know, should look at or the appropriate government, you know, sub-agencies of the county should look at, um, uh, because this issue just keeps coming, you know, apparently just keeps coming up with this particular individual, but it's, it's a broader issue about what, you know, what, what restrictions of any should the county put on, you know, on an individual who's an employee, especially a, a key employee's, uh, you know, public comments. So with that, I thank you for your, for your, uh, attention and, and again, thank you all for setting these meetings up like this in these rather trying and unique times. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parkward. Uh, Nancy, did we head to anyone else? Bill, anyone else indicating a wish to make comments?
I have.
I've not seen any other chat or requests. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Nathan speaking. Um, just, uh, a, a couple of thoughts. Um, number one, we have heard, I don't know whether they're threats or simply concerns expressed about legal action, I, I have my questions there, uh, but also we're talking about personnel matters, uh, that have been implicated here. As a result, both are confidential and protected, uh, by the employees' rights under Iowa law, and I would recommend that we not make any comments, uh, without consulting with the county attorney on this.
I agree, Nathan. This is really not on for deliberation. I think that the board can take this under comments. Okay, so seeing no other, uh, chat messages, emails or other indications, someone wanted to speak. The next item on our agenda is items with the county engineer Keith White. Uh, item number four A is discussion of possible action to approve resolution oh four thirteen twenty oh one, vacating unused secondary roads right away adjacent to New Era Road in Sweetland Township.
Yeah, good morning. Um-
Good morning, Keith.
This is a request that we had had for years, I mean, years and years, that, uh, it's a complicated survey, as you saw, uh, which was, uh, done by Martin Whittaker, uh, the survey, because we said, you know, we weren't going to do this and the individual wanted it bad enough and, and here, one week after we just handed some to you, we, we got this handed to us. So this is out there on New Era Road. Uh, did have an exhibit showing you where that's at, but it, it's right near where Trolley joins, joins the road. Uh, and so, uh, part of it will go back to one part, property and part of it will go back to the other. And like, so this was a request, belonged years ago from outside. Uh, it's kind of down, down in the ravine over there, so, uh, that's, that's what it's about.
Okay, any discussion, questions? If not, I'd accept the motion.
This is Santos, I move to approve.
This is Scott, I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Keith, did you want to give us a project update this morning?
Yes, sure do. The, uh, projects that I commented on last week, I'll quickly comment, uh, the one on one hundred and fifty-fifth street, west of State Seventy, uh, the one on North Isa, those are being closed out. I noted last week they got seated, so, uh, they're being closed out. The one on one hundred and twentieth west of West Liberty, uh, it was still too wet, wet, so they didn't get there and we're thinking probably the same story this week with the, uh, with the forecast. Uh, they need to dry things up before they come back though, even though the structure's built, the, the earthwork's got to happen. Uh, on G twenty-eight, uh, Peterson Construction has been working down there stripping stop, topsoil, doing class thirteen excavation. Uh, they hope to finish up the class thirteen in the area underneath the, the widening units. Uh, we think things are going fairly well down there so far. Uh, there is going to be a, the red or the concrete plant's going to be set up, uh, it's a Han plant that's being set up, uh, in Hires Yard there off of Highway sixty-one and Hires hopes to be paving the first week of May. And all, of course, subject to change. And we had our, our pre-construction meeting electronically last week, uh, last Thursday on the F fifty-eight nine twenty-seven Old Six project. Uh, planning begins, uh, on the lead start date, which is May fourth. Uh, don't think there's a lot there other than, on that project, Minats is a sub and, and Minats has been sending about everybody statewide everywhere a letter, uh, saying due to COVID nineteen, they might need some extra mercy and some extra money. How about that? Uh, so we'll see how that, we'll see how that plays out. Uh, amazingly, people have their hands out to see how they can take advantage of the situation. And our other project that I mentioned last week, uh, the multiple corporate locations, Triple B, uh, down on Echo Avenue, they plan to start this Friday, but again, we're thinking with the weather, with the weather that might delay a little bit. Uh, but as you can see, construction is, uh, going on or trying to get going on. Uh, any questions on that?
I don't see anybody. Bill, did you get any comments, anything?
Nothing so far.
Okay, Keith, did you have anything else this morning?
Yeah, uh, on the design side, uh, we have set out, uh, plans and bid documents for pavement markings, uh, due back here about the end of the month and, uh, we also are sending out crack sealing plans. These are all maintenance, not construction. And Sealco, we have them, but that's what's being worked on right now. Um, the only thing I'll add, and, you know, we'll have to be fluid, but we will have to watch our income a little bit. Uh, you know, we have, we have a large balance right now, but, uh, yeah, our income, which is very much dependent on road use tax and local option tax, uh, can be significantly impacted by the, the economy being somewhat shut down. So it could be a point where we're going to have to tell you all that we're going to stop doing certain things because we can't pay the bills. And hopefully, uh, the economy turns back on and, and it's just a little dip in the road and doesn't affect as much. But that is something that we are watching. That's all I have. I'm going to get any questions.
Um, Keith, when did you say that we were going to have Hires start? This is Santos.
Well, they're talking, um, the first week of May there, May fourth.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's kind of depending on all of your travels. I said the plant's going up, going to be going up down there on, on, uh, right, on, on Hires property right off of sixty-one down there, uh, near Mittman. And, uh,
You know.
A plant will have to go up and has to get certified by the state before it can produce any concrete. So a lot has happened to be ready for the payment.
And is Minats going to be running that site or is that Hires going to be doing that site? When you, I, I got, I kind of got lost on that comment.
Han, Han wrecked it. Han owned the plant. They'll be running it, going on Jamie, Jamie Hires', uh, construction site there. And of course, Hires doing the paving.
Okay, I understand now.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, seeing nothing else?
This is Nathan, I've got a question for you. Um, are you, your, your folks are able to stay safe while, while doing the work that they need to do? Uh, do you, do you guys need any special PPE or anything like that?
They're good at the moment. Uh, the, uh, you know, we really got kind of two operations going on here, the engineering side, which when construction going, we're all spread out anyway. And the maintenance side, uh, the, the work that we're assigning them, they're, they're staying fairly isolated and they're also coming in, well, i- if we have everybody here, that there's, there's only a dozen and we're bringing them in six and six, uh, half an hour apart. Uh, so, and they, they go directly to their vehicles and go to work. So, and then people are in out sheds and, and, you know, nobody's has permission to go to the out sheds. So we're staying, uh, pretty socially isolated. Uh, frankly, I, I think most of us are staying more socially isolated at work than if we were off, uh, from what I observe out in the public. So I, I think we're doing a really good job of it here.
Appreciate it. Keep saying.
Thank you, Keith. Anything else for Keith? Okay, let's move on to item number five, discussion of possible action to accept the record, county recorder's report of fees collected for this quarter ending March thirty-first twenty twenty in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents.
This is Scott, I move to approve.
This is Santos, I have a second.
So I have a motion by Scott, a second by Santos. Any discussion? This will be a roll call. Scott?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item number six is discussion of possible action to approve the minute of the April sixth twenty twenty regular meeting.
Nathan moves to approve.
Santos, second.
I have a motion by Nathan, a second by Santos. Roll call, any discussion on this? Roll call vote, Nathan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item number seven is correspondence. Nathan, did you have any correspondence?
I had, uh, one piece of correspondence, um, from, I believe it was a county resident, but I wasn't sure, uh, regarding the situation with the county employee that was discussed at the public comment.
Thank you. Doug, did you have any correspondence?
Yeah, correspondence I had was with Clark Hoffman and that was concerning the jailer. And I received a phone call from Bill Starb with concerns about filling the county attorney's vacancy. That's all I had.
Okay. Scott?
I had no correspondence to note.
Santos?
Um, I just had the email that we got from Ed, the same one that we had from, uh, concerned around the county employee. And then I had a, uh, email and request, um, asking me if we had had, uh, enough protection around our ransomware. And it's something that I probably want to mention to Bill if it's with the existing concerns. I know we had talked about that during budget, but it'd be something that they want to follow up with. That's all I had.
Thank you, Santos. Uh, and I had, I had the Capitol Dispatch and another, I, I assume a county resident, uh, on the jailer issue, and that was it for me for correspondence as well. So how about committee reports? Uh, Nathan?
I had a, uh, an online meeting with the Seventh Judicial Correctional District. Um, nothing really earth-shattering there, uh, dealing with the fallout of coronavirus and how that's going to affect the budget.
Okay.
Nathan, when was that meeting?
I'm sorry, Leslie, that was on Friday, the tenth. And again, it was electronic.
Okay. Doug?
I had no committees.
Scott?
I had no committees.
Santos?
No committee.
Okay, and then Leslie, on the sixth, Monday the sixth, I had a fiscal, it was in all, both meetings mine this week were electronic as well. I had a, for the Mississippi Valley Workforce Authority, I had a, uh, electronic meeting discussion on the fiscal agent services and requirements for an RFP. And then on the seventh, uh, that doesn't make sense, on Wednesday anyway, I had the Region Nine, uh, Workforce Board meeting. That was it for me. Okay, item number nine is to receive comments from county employees. Are there county employees wishing to make comments?
Jeff, this is Leslie, I'd like to make a comment again this week. Um, I just want to remind the citizens about my public service announcement last week regarding the primary election, that due to COVID nineteen polling places have been temporarily combined for the primary election to be held June second twenty twenty. For the health and safety of our voters and precinct officials, I strongly encourage every voter to consider voting an absentee ballot for this election. The deadline to request an absentee ballot by mail is Friday, May twenty-second twenty twenty. If you choose to vote in person on election day, six polling sites will be open. Precincts will be assigned to one of the six polling sites. There'll be three in Muscatine, one in Fruitland, one in West Liberty and one in Wilton. The sites and precinct assignments are posted on the auditor's page on the county's website, www.co.muscatine.iu.us, and will be published through various resources throughout the county between now and June second. As always, should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the auditor's office at five six three two six three five eight two one. Thank you.
Leslie, this is Nathan. Um, I've been seeing a rumor on Facebook and the like, and I wonder if you could address the, the truth or falsity of it. And that rumor is that due to the coronavirus, the, um, the Secretary of State's office will automatically be sending everybody in the state a, um, a absentee ballot request form in the mail.
That is correct. Uh, the Secretary of State plans on mailing those out to every single registered voter, a, a, and encouraging them to vote absentee by mail for this election. There'll be an absentee request going to every single registered voter, probably going out in the mail between, from, from Des Moines between April twenty-third and April twenty-eighth. And people can wait for those, or if they don't want to, they can go ahead and submit them now to us, their, their own. But those will come out later this month, um, from the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there any other county employees wishing to make a comment?
Yeah, this is Bill. I just wanted to address, uh, the comments that Santos had received or the questions. And, uh, we are actively reviewing those, uh, all the time and looking for ways that we can improve. And, uh, if Santos would like to have a discussion offline, you can let me know.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, Bill, I, I just wanted to make a comment on that. It was just a question in regards to making sure that we're, we're doing the best that we can possibly can. And I know you are. I just wanted to make sure that I included that in the comments or the request that I had gotten. And so, just stay on top of it and continue to move forward and, you know, that's all I was asking. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Other comments from county employees?
Jeff, this is Brian Wright.
Hey, Brian.
Just give the board an update. At this present time, we do have ninety-six cases in Muscatine County. And they're presently, uh, working with public health and the hospital with this. There's an anticipation that it might peak sometime by the end of this month or will peak at the end of this month. Uh, working with hospital, looking to utilize the resources that I have in emergency management of the rehab trailer being used out at the hospital. Uh, presently, I am also responsible for issuing the, the equipment. And due to shortages by the state, we have a situation where it's going to be prioritized with first line healthcare, and long-term healthcare. Uh, secondly, continuing to monitor the Mississippi River. We are in a moderate stage at this time, and that's all I have.
Hey, Brian, this is Jeff. Uh, do we have the date of the flood, the crest projection?
Stand by. Presently, we are at eighteen point nine-nine feet, uh, based on what weather we got over the weekend, particularly up north. Looks like we're gonna hold even in moderate. Uh, might start to see a little bit of a drop. Uh, nothing significant at this time.
Thank you, Brian. Any other county employees wishing to comment? Okay, moving on to item number ten. Item number ten A is discussion of possible action to approve a proposal from Tall Grass Archaeology LLC from the Muscatine County Survey of Country Schools and Churches in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. Anthony, do you have anybody wanting to talk?
No, um, the historic preservation commission asked that I just put this under my stuff. Um, this, this is a, a part of a project that you guys have approved all along. There is fund, the funding is available for, to cover the cost of this. Um, some of it, they received a grant for some of it. The rest of it, they would use dollars they received from the, the bridge mitigation that happened, um, previously.
Okay, thank you. So any discussion or comment on this? If not, I would accept a motion.
Nathan, so moved.
Santos, second.
I have a motion by Nathan, a second by Santos. Uh, this will roll call. Nathan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item eleven B, or I'm sorry, ten B. Uh, review and possible action to approve two revised class specifications and grade assignments for the Muscatine, for the maintenance foreman and the fleet manager positions. Possible action to approve staff placements for existing employees in the new grade.
There was a, excuse me, there was a, a memo in your packet regarding these two positions. Um, is there any questions?
I don't hear any, hearing no questions, I will accept a motion on the item.
This is Doug. I'll move to approve.
Santos, second.
So I have a motion and a second. Uh, Doug?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item ten C is an action to acknowledge the letters of resignation from County Attorney Alan Ostrigren. Discuss an impossible direction regarding procedures for filling the vacancy. So I think that the, uh, I guess we didn't notice and note in correspondence, but we were notified by the county attorney that he is moving on to another role. We wish him great success, but that, uh, rings about the process for us. Uh, Leslie, you did issue a memo to us on what our possible actions are. Could you kind of give us a brief?
Yes, I did want to make one correction of that memo I gave you too, just to start out. I had said in there that he had to be a resident sixty days prior. That's for all other county offices. The county attorney only has to be a resident at the time of the appointment, just to make that clear. Um, but basically you have two options. You can publish a notice of intent to appoint. That has to be published at least four days, but not more than twenty days before the intended date of the appointment. Um, or you can call for a special election. Um, the date, um, can't be set for the special, if you do do a special election until, I believe, July seventh is the first date available. Uh, due to COVID ID, there are no special elections right now. And then you run into the blackout period with the primary election. So that takes a clear out to July before you can actually hold an election. An appointment, if you decide to go that route, would only take it to the November election. And then whoever wins the November, it would be on the November election as a vacancy. Whoever wins the November election would be the county attorney for the rest of the, um, uh, rest of the term. Um, if you held it as a special election, then that would take it up to the, to the end of that county attorney's term, normal term. Um, if you decide to do a notice of appointment at any time within fourteen days after the notice or after the appointment, whichever is later, um, which is usually the appointment, the residents can submit a petition with at least one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine signatures requesting a special election. Um, and then at that point, it would go to a special election stage. So your options as the board are to whether or not you want to try to appoint or whether or not you want to, um, call for a special election.
Uh, Nancy, refresh my memory. I believe, uh, the resignation was as of May first, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And you could not make the appointment in, uh, effective until?
May first. Until May, well, the end, yeah, May second technically, but yeah, yeah.
So in my mind, as a, as a practical matter, uh, we need somebody to manage the office of the county attorney in the short term. I think I lean towards an election process certainly, uh, to, and I think it looks like the most expeditious, Leslie, would be July seventh would be the earliest we could call a special election?
That's correct. That is correct.
This is Nathan. I, I would normally agree, um, but, you know, we're seeing all kinds of blowback like in Wisconsin about the, the, the safety of holding elections in these circumstances. And, um, not to mention probably, I have no idea what the cost would be, but it's probably not insignificant. Um, to me, I mean, we're looking at just a few months until the, the general, when this would be put on. Uh, ostensibly, the only additional cost would be printing another line on the ballot, right, Leslie?
That's correct. Yes.
The, the question I have on the general is how does one get their name into the general election, Leslie? Cause I, uh, is the?
There, there is an issue, a little bit of an issue with that right now. That's still being worked on by the Attorney General, so I can't give you a complete answer. I can give you a partial answer. Um, as far as the parties go, they would be able to reconvene their conventions and nominate someone to be on that ballot. But at this point, um, the deadline for just anyone to file a petition to be on, to get onto that ballot is passed. It ended in March. Um, the Attorney General's looking into, is there a way to do that? There was originally going to be some legislation to clean that up, to make there be a, a part, a, a short amount of time for people to get their name on that ballot if there was a vacancy. But, um, with the COVID nineteen, the legislature's not doing anything right now, so it's probably not gonna happen. So the Secretary of State has contacted the Attorney General, but we have not heard back from them yet on that, on that topic.
Leslie, how would someone get their name on the special election ballot? Would be any different? Is it a nonpartisan election at that time? How's that work?
No, it's still a partisan election, so the party could, the only way to get your name on with a party, um, recognition behind it would be, uh, if the parties reconvene their conventions to be able to, um, do that. But the, um, there is a filing period for a special election to which anybody can, uh, get two hundred and fifty signatures in order to put their name on. But that's just for the special election.
So if the parties want to get involved, either way, they're gonna have to convene a special, um?
That's, that's correct. Yes. Either way, the parties would have to reconvene if they want to put someone on representing their party.
Okay, and imagine if, if you would, that we set a special election for close to July seventh. What would be the deadline for submitting signatures to go that route to get on the ballot?
Oh, just a second. Give me a second, I'll tell you.
No problem.
Um. Just a minute, I'm trying to quick look that up. I forget how many days it is. I wanna say it's like forty-some days, but it could be thirty-two. I'm not sure, so let me check.
So, but it's five, six weeks ahead of the, the election date?
It's, it's, it's like four to five weeks, I think, somewhere in there, maybe, maybe three. It, it's, it's fairly close to the election. Second, I'm trying to find it. Give me one second here to...
I mean, my other worry is I don't want to incentivize people to run out and try and meet with the public and get signatures in such a short timeframe. Um.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, it's a note from Mr. Askew to the same extent I, I think. How do you get signatures collected in the current situation and be fair to everybody? Um, maybe, I, I didn't follow a hundred percent so.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, just answer Nathan, it is, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-five days before the election is the deadline.
Aye. Not much better, but yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, and Leslie, if it were, uh, ref- refresh my memory, maybe I didn't pay close enough attention. So if we held a special election, then that person would be seated or, or put placed in office when? And then what would the duration of that term be? Would it be to fill out the current term? Is that what it would be?
Yes, they would be placed in office, um, right, right after the canvas. And then, um, they would take, they would keep the office till the end of the term in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. So it's a two-year?
Mm-hmm.
Roughly, uh, so what we're looking at is a special election. And, and did you have a, you said we would have to do electronic? So we'd have to get ballots programmed and do all of that?
That's correct.
And throw a rough number, twenty-five thousand?
I'd say probably anywhere around twenty thousand, somewhere in there. It depends on how many precincts we decide to open up and that sort of thing.
And, and we're, we'll be doing that again for the general, uh, in November, correct?
Right, the general costs a lot more because of all the absentee activities. So the general usually runs around, and because of all the high programming of the two-sided ballot and all that, a general usually runs around sixty thousand probably.
Well, I would think that.
But the, but the general's not gonna have really much additional cost because of one office. That's not really gonna cause any additional cost in the general.
Right, we're doing that anyway.
Yeah, we have to do the general anyway, and it's just one little office, which is minor amount of programming. It's when you're doing a, the programming for the election for just the county attorney would be, um, would, would run that up plus all the poll workers and the, and the ballots and all that being electronic. Or being, you know, abjecto stand.
And in the appointment process, the board really, uh, has flexibility there. Uh, they must be a resident of the Muscatine County at the time of appointment.
Correct.
It can't be done till after May first, correct?
Right, you can't have a, you can go ahead and do interviewing, whatever, however you want to taking applications, however you want to do it. You can ma, you can make the decision prior to May first, but you can't have the appointment be a, you, the vote when you make the appointment has to be effective for after May first.
Have we had any word from the county attorney himself about what he thinks would provide the best continuity or the best, um, I don't know what the best options are?
Um, I don't think, I mean, look at the letter he gave me, but that's all I have from him, I believe.
Okay.
Nathan, I, I did have a brief conversation with Alan and while he didn't make a firm recommendation, I think he said it's clearly the board's decision. You know, he, we talked about some what ifs, you know. I think we all know that he currently has staff. We have attorneys in, on staff. And I think that would be a, a board question is what you'd be comfortable with doing. You know, me personally, I think we need to go to an election. I think in light of the current situation, does a special election make sense? Or do we just put it on the general election and ask the parties to reconvene their convention and get candidates? And that way we get candidates and opportunity to, to can, you know, campaign for the position.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see a robust election process.
I guess I, if I, if I could say something is, Leslie, if we are going to look at a special election, um, July seventh is right on top of a county holiday. That kind of messes up us up a little bit here and here in the office. I would like to maybe see it held July fourteenth rather than July seventh, but that's just me.
I was, this is Nathan again, I was, I was thinking, as much as I'd like to see a special election as soon as possible, and I think election still makes sense, we're gonna get the election in, in November, one where, I mean, worst case scenario. So to me, it makes sense to just wait until then. I mean, rather than expose more people and, uh, you know, add, add at expense. We've never run a special election in, in a time like this, I don't think, obviously. Um, so, you know, especially with, I just have gotten a lot of pause reading as I have about the stuff in Milwaukee, how, you know, just trying to, to force an election in too fast and where people, they didn't have clear communication ahead of time. It just really created some issues and some safety hazards. So I'd rather see, you know, let's be safe, let's wait a couple more months and get this thing in, in, uh, November.
If you do that, you do have to appoint before then, because you have to appoint with employees then.
I, I don't see any choice but to do some type of an appointment. Now, I did also speak with Alan because, you know, if we needed to, we could contract his services for a, uh, period of time until we could seat a, a county attorney. Scott, Doug, Santos?
I, this is Santos. I think that, that I would feel more comfortable with pushing for, uh, an appointment, um, sooner versus, uh, trying to be one in July as Nathan's comments were. I think it's a lot of, a lot of difficulty to try to end up getting signatures. And I think we would end up, um, not being able to probably get the best candidate available that I think would be out there. I would feel more comfortable with appointments in the, in the interim and, and then allow for a spec, for a regular election in the, in November. Is what I would, I would feel would be my opinion on that.
Thank you, Santos.
This is Scott. I would, uh, would like to see an appointment is what I would like to see in the election in the fall.
I would, uh, would like to see an appointment is what I would like to see in the election in the fall.
This is Doug. I agree.
Okay, it sounds like we pretty much have a consensus on that, I, I think. The, now, the question would be a process for an appointment. And I don't know that I'm ready to, I don't think anyone is ready to make an appointment at this point. Would that be a correct statement?
I haven't, no.
In, in order to do an appoint, appointment, I believe you have to publish a notice of intent to appoint, um, before that could start.
That's correct.
And, and then it's, I guess it's your decision if you want to accept, um, applications or resumes, however you want to do that, of people who might be interested in being considered. Um, and then we would set up, um, some sort of interview process, which I have talked with Alan, and he's certainly willing to help us in terms of developing questions and going through that process. It just becomes, it's that, even that becomes a bit more of a challenge under the current circumstances.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to, to see who is, uh, ready, willing, and able to, to serve in that capacity. You know, obviously, with the understanding they'd have to have that it's a temporary appointment.
Right, right.
But I'd like to see applications, resumes and such.
Yeah, this is Jeff. I, I mean, I, I really don't feel like I'm competent to be one that would judge that. If we can come up with a fair process, I think I'd be okay. I was kind of leaning towards I'd, you know, if, if we had a lead attorney in the office that we felt that with Alan as a backup we could utilize for the short term and then go to the election, uh, that would be kind of where I would be comfortable.
I, I hear you, Jeff. That makes sense.
So, Jeff, are you, are you saying that, that you, you're not interested in, in taking applications? That you're interested in determining whether there's somebody in-house that could serve?
That would be my inclination, I, you know, because you're asking people, you know, the other thing is you're asking someone in a professional, uh, category to maybe apply for something that we could only even say till, because even if they went on the, on the ballot as a candidate in November, it would be just to, the voter would have to keep them in office. And I think, you know, to me, that's a high risk for somebody. Uh, I think I would rather see it go to the election process and if we just, we have someone there and we could figure out a way to contract services if there was a shortcoming in their background, that maybe they need some help. We could do that, uh, to just get us through till we can get to an election.
This is Scott. Um, I agree with Jeff in that regard. Uh, there's a lot of risk for a, a potential appointee. And, um, um, I agree with Jeff's thought.
Well, I, so I think this, that probably comes down to then resolving whether or not there's somebody in-house who has an interest in, in doing that, um?
And they also, remember, have to be a resident. I don't, I don't know if they're not necessarily. They may be. I don't know. I'm just saying they do have to be residents, so just make sure of that.
So, at this point, maybe it makes sense for us to do this. For, for me to have that conversation with the county attorney, determine whether or not there is anybody in-house that has an interest. Um, if there's not, that kind of makes this, this a moot point in terms of a way to proceed. Um, so how about if I have that conversation with the county attorney? I put this back on for next week to either provide you an update with that or if it doesn't look like there's somebody in-house who has an interest, then, um, then I can have a notice of intent prepared that, that talks about accepting applications in the selection process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think at this point, that, that's really what I see as our only option. And, you know, we need somebody that'd have a willingness and an ability, it sounds like from Leslie's comments, to serve in that role that we could appoint.
This is Scott. Nancy, I agree that that's the way to proceed.
This is Santos, and I, I agree as well.
Doug?
I agree. That'd be the proper process.
Nathan, you, I assume you're okay?
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, Jeff.
Okay, so I think we have consensus on that, Nancy.
Yep, I have, I think I have clear direction.
Okay, now, do we need to take, uh, action? Looks like we need to take action to accept the, to acknowledge the letter of the county attorney?
I, I don't, I don't know that you need to take action because technically, the notice goes to, to the, the, the county auditor. Um, but I put it on the agenda that way to give you guys the opportunity if you want to formally acknowledge that and, and kind of kick off the process of how we're gonna replace them.
Okay. So, it, it sounds like we have a direction. You're good. Nancy, you know what we need to do?
Yep, I, I know what you want me to do.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Okay, uh, on, moving on to item 10D is the COVID-19 update. Is anything, Nancy, I don't know if Eric's on the call. Eric has been, uh, kind of keeping it near to the ground as well. I know Brian gave us a brief update.
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have anything additional to add to what Brian said other than, you know, I, I think things continue to be working well in most of our departments with the restrictions that we put in place. Um, I think we're still meeting the needs of the public, um, and moving forward.
I personally have had great feedback from the public that, that things have been, the staff has done a wonderful job in making things as easy as they possibly could in these times. And that things seem to be going well. It seems like we are, we're, we're staying staffed and able to provide the services that folks need at that time. So, I think everything's going well. And I credit the department managers and you, Nancy, for keeping this moving. Is there any other items come before the board? If not, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for attending and our visitors, thank you for checking in. I saw about 16 people in the room today, which is a pretty good crowd. Have a, have a good day. Thanks.
Jeff, will you be stopping by to sign stuff?
Yes, I will.